I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge the twenty-sixth. Good evening to all that are here in attendance and all sitting at home. This is the Stanhope Board of Education Board meeting of April the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Choquette?
Here.
Mrs. Harold?
Here.
Mr. Valley?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Yagman?
Here.
Yagnum, sorry, excuse me. Mrs. Sharfstein?
Here.
Mr. Moscatello?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Hagaman?
Here.
Sunshine Law Statement. This is to advise the general public and to instruct that it be recorded in the minutes that in compliance with chapter two thirty-one of the Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five, entitled the Open Public Meetings Act, Stanhope Board of Education, located at twenty-four Valley Road, Stanhope, New Jersey, has caused this notice to be posted at the office of the Stanhope Board of Education, mailed to the New Jersey Herald, the municipal clerk of the borough of Stanhope, the Stanhope Post Office, and posted at the Valley Road School and on Stanhope Public Schools website, setting forth the time, date, and location of the meeting. Mission Statement. The Stanhope School District will provide a diverse and challenging educational environment that encourages individual initiatives, fosters success through teamwork, promotes accountability, demonstrates a passion for educational excellence, and ensures student achievement related to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. The Stanhope School District is committed to the development of our students and staff so that individual aspirations can be achieved through their lifelong learning. There's a possibility of an executive session as one of the last items on the agenda. Now we're moving into presentations.
Okay, thank you. So I want to just reverse the order of numbers one and two before we get started. Before I recognize all of our hardworking students here for honor roll, I wanted to first recognize one of our staff members who has been nominated for a We Are VRS Award. This award was started by the board several years ago, I want to say six or seven years ago, to recognize some of the outstanding work that our staff is doing inside the building and beyond. So anybody can nominate. There's a link on our website if any of you are interested in nominating an outstanding educator. Please feel free to do so. I typically don't announce who the nominator was, but when I read this narrative, you're probably going to figure it out pretty quickly. But I wanted to welcome and recognize Mrs. Valeska Milan, our social worker. It was written that Valeska has been an incredible asset to the health office when it comes to translating confidential pertinent information with students and their parents who do not speak English. She is always willing, able, and quickly responsive to communicating the health needs of and for our Spanish-speaking students. She assists the registration process for incoming students as needed. She makes it a point to reach out to the Spanish-speaking families to make sure they're aware that she is a resource for them to be able to communicate back and forth with the school in all areas. She provides this service mostly without any notice and almost always with a smile. Some of those days are rough. It's not a hundred percent, but we love it. I would like to recognize Valeska for her dedication and commitment to service for our community as she makes it a priority that all families are communicated with thoroughly and effectively. This is very much appreciated by myself, the students, and their families. Thank you, Valeska. Right, and for our students and their families that are here, welcome. I cannot believe we are already recognizing students for marking period three this year. One more to go, and it's going to go awfully quick. So let's make sure that we are concentrating on our studies, not getting spring fever, and keeping school first right now. Again, as much as we want to thank and applaud our students for their hard work, I want to thank the parents for the support that you provide to them each and every day, not just getting them here and feeding them and clothing them, but just staying on top of them, making sure that they're doing their work, providing support when they need to. It's really appreciated here at the school. It makes our jobs a lot easier. And kids, let's give our parents a round of applause for everything that they're doing for us. All right, so I am going to first read our honor roll recipients. Honor roll is achieved when a student in sixth, seventh, or eighth grade achieves all As and Bs on their marking period report card. High honor roll will be listed next. Those are for students who achieve straight As on their report card. We have a lot of students that have made honor roll, a lot more that are here today. So please bear with me, I'm going to read the names of all of our kids because I'm sure that we have some parents watching at home. When you hear your name, please come on up. Mr. Moscatello will hand you your certificate, and please freeze for a picture for your parents. Okay? First, Abigail Andrews. Aiden Bruner. This is, there you go. Amy Desalinas. Claire Frank. Logan Fruevols. Jack Galata. Rebecca Luzi. Kylie McDonald. Tabitha Mueller. Caitlin O'Connor. Sina Osbe. Mrs. Frank will get a picture for you. Emily Perry. Joshua Perry. Kathleen Prano. Tess Roth. Sienna Zapata. Emily Bosch. Leo Castellana. Daniela Sampa. Linda Frome. Archith Kandapi. Dominic Lalama. Christopher Thornton. Donovan Vergano. Jasper Ballow. Aaron Cahill. Michaela Castillo. Zoe Di Oliveira. Noah Denight. Bella Garcia. Christian Komenek. Asla Kamurku. Cameron Kopich. Ariko Magat. Cameron Mueller. Brooklyn Rose Perez. Tyler Perry. Matthew Rowan. Carly Vilani. So the next names that I read will be students who received high honor roll, all As on their marking period report card. And I'd like to lead us with Brayden Light. Angelina Robles. Analia Baca. Charlotte Harold. Dylan Kelly. Raymond Frome. Michael Kamek. Jake Palermo. And Daniel Ricaldi. Again, congratulations to our students, job well done, and thank you all for being here. In just a minute, we're going to continue with our board business. I invite you, please, to take some refreshments for the road so that they don't end up in the office or in my home. And hopefully, we'll see out here for marking period four. Have a good night.
It's the cherry on top. Yeah, certainly is. Yeah. Absolutely.
But they grow fast. I know, I know people tell you that you're like, yeah, you're not fast enough.
Just turn your mic on when you're ready.
You have three now. Is there a big difference between the two?
Not really. No. Just kind of get going into the mix. Just, no.
Is that a presentation? The first one, the first two were the hardest, and this one's kind of just like...
The first one is so hard, right? Because even though it should be simpler, but you're not ready. Everything is big. And then with the second one, it's like...
One was so...
I didn't realize it until now. Because you basically are there all the time watching. When you should have just gone through your life, it would have been much easier. But you don't have the experience.
Thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome. You asked me, I got to talk all day.
I understand what's happening.
Okay, ready to go?
Yes.
Just later. Two weeks of sunshine.
So you can do the school performance?
Okay, so yeah, our next presentation is the twenty-one, twenty-two school performance report. I plan to go through this report briefly only because ninety percent of the information within it, I've already presented to the board at our NJSLA and testing presentation. But just to give you a little background of what this is, every year, the Department of Education issues this performance report to provide people within each community a variety of information about each school and each district. A lot of the information is test scores and student growth, chronic absenteeism. I'll go through the whole list of what's included in here in just a moment. For anybody that does want to see this report, it is posted on our website, the comprehensive version, the summary version, as well as the comprehensive and summary versions, both in Spanish. These reports, for the first time since, I believe, eighteen and nineteen, report on almost all of the data that it reported on before the pandemic. The only piece of data that's not included in this is student growth and student growth when it comes to teacher assessment because they only reported on last year's testing data. And in order to measure growth, you needed to have two years, you know, to determine that. They use a specific formula to measure that. Included in this report are school and district overviews, demographic information, student growth typically, but not in this one, academic achievement, college and career readiness, which measures in K-eight situations, student enrollment in algebra courses, and chronic absenteeism, graduation and post-secondary information, which is obviously not applicable to us, school climate and environment, staff information, mostly demographics, school accountability, and the school district narrative information. A couple pieces of information that I thought were important to note for full transparency. When it comes to the NJSLA scores, we did meet our target. The state sets a target based on state performance and measures us against that in language arts and math. We met our target for language arts, and as you can remember, our math scores were a little bit on the low side. We did not meet the target for math, so obviously, that's something that we're working towards this year. We met our target for chronic absenteeism, which surprised me because the target for chronic absenteeism, I believe, used to be six or seven percent. The target is now seventeen point three percent. And we met it at a rate of twelve point eight percent. And I believe that that has increased dramatically since, obviously, COVID and students being excused from school for quarantine. Okay. Two areas within the chronic absenteeism, however, that I did want to point out that we will begin targeting our students who are considered economically disadvantaged and students with learning disabilities did have a higher rate of chronic absenteeism, which we'd like to try to address and get those numbers more on par with the rest of the population. So that's my brief summary of the performance report. I'm happy to answer any questions, not only now, but if you take a look at the document and you do have questions, whether it's about our performance or just what the data means, I'm happy to entertain that conversation with you.
Both questions?
How far were we lagging in the math department?
So the math, we were hurt by one particular grade level that was pretty low. We had some grade levels that were above the state expectations. If I remember correctly, I think last year, our sixth grade scores were pretty low. Our eighth grade algebra scores were very high, as they typically are. And I believe third grade was also low, if I remember correctly. So it was a lot of variability. Third grade was very low, which I kind of anticipated because those were the kids who were impacted the most by the pandemic. If they took the test last year as a third grader, those are the kids who were in kindergarten, you know, when the pandemic hit. And then they had to go through hybrid school and shortened days, you know, not having those social interactions. So we're doing a lot of things, not only within the school day, but in the summer programs to hopefully remediate that. We're doing a lot of response to intervention, targeted intervention with our specialists. And hopefully, we'll see an increase in test scores for this coming year.
Do you remember the grades were also low for the second graders last year? Is it following a pattern?
The second grade, so this test is third through eighth grade for our school. Second graders don't test. They'll test this year as third graders.
Historically, third graders don't have the lowest grade. This is like the first time you see that?
So really, when I do these presentations, when I report on this data, I focus more on the growth of the students from year to year because it's really difficult when the third graders are taking it for the first time to really get a feel, you know, for where they're at. Obviously, instruction and resources and opportunities within the school play a major part in the student progress. But when you only have twenty-five to thirty-five kids in a grade, there is a lot of variability. So you'll see throughout the years, for the nine years that I've been here, there have been grade levels, cohorts, that have traditionally scored lower than a lot of the other cohorts. But what we're really looking to do is increase that growth so that they're closing that gap. I don't know if that's a situation for this, for last year's third grade cohort. We're going to obviously see with the tests this year. But it's going to take a year, a couple of years to really figure that out with the data that we're getting. So hopefully, the scores will be higher. And if they're not, obviously, we'll go back to the drawing boards and see where we got to go for that.
Okay. Anybody with questions on that report? Okay. That takes us to the public hearing. On the budget?
Give that to me.
Thank you, sir.
I have, we have to move, right?
I'm just going to turn right here. If you want to maybe sit in Debbie's seat.
Can you guys see the screen? Yes.
This is just going to be a brief description of the budget. Very, luckily, it's very cut and dry. We don't have any surprises coming down the pipe.
I think we're, oh, thank you, sir.
I think we were surprised that we got money from the S-two go up by twelve percent. I think that was a surprise, but a very pleasant surprise, so we'll keep that as it is. As every school year goes, our salary increases are going to reflect the third year of the contract. Next year will be a negotiation year, so we'll be starting on that in the upcoming school year. There is no change in faculty, anticipated, that is, for next year. And we're going to maintain the academic programs, our additional summer program that I know Mr. Hagaman's been talking to you about, and also our social-emotional learning programs, which we, as we constantly talk about COVID and coming out of it, are really important to us. Thank you. We've also discussed the fact that the medical benefits for the state health benefits plan has increased by fifteen percent. Silver lining, we thought dead toll was going to go up by four, but it's only up by three, so that's nice. And our revenues for state and federal aid is slightly increased. We're going to see a decrease in certain areas, which we'll see soon. But again, increase in that S-two and other areas. So it's going to kind of remain relatively up a skosh. Thank you. So as you could see, I handed out the cheat sheet. I don't like talking about grants and such without you guys having a better understanding, but to keep me from talking your, you know, your ears off, I put it down in writing for you. But these are our federal sources that come in to help off... But these are our federal sources that come in to help offset some costs. There are different title grants that are allocated, and as you could see, they, on a regular basis, they really do stay relatively the same year after year. On occasion, especially through the time of COVID, there was a lot of carryover, so if, because we didn't spend it all in one particular year, you were able to roll it over. But now that we're back and functioning full on, you're going to see that less and less because we do need to allocate those resources more. Thank you. These are our state sources. I realize I didn't put this on your cheat sheet. I'll give you a brief overview. We have your categorical transportation aid. What all of these do, in a nutshell, really, is offset the cost of an adequacy budget. And what that means is they take the, the what it costs per pupil to educate the children of Stanhope, right? And they get a number, the state comes up with a funding formula, and they take that number and they match it with the local fair share. And if there's an inadequacy, they give you more money to bring you up to adequacy, meaning they're going to help you to make sure the kids are educated for what they think they need financially, they need. So your transportation aid is to offset your transportation needs. We don't have a huge transportation need. We do have some students that do get transportation. So as you could tell, it's low compared to other districts. However, we don't have a very large population for it.
Just interject for the people watching at home.
Yes.
The transportation, the students who are transported are transported to other private schools for students with disabilities.
Yes.
We're not transporting students to Valley Road School.
We are.
In most cases.
In most cases. Okay. I don't want to do definitives because there are some, there are some. Are, and all the other, all the other categories are the same for one way or another. It is to offset our current budget that the state doesn't seem to feel is adequate enough to educate. Majority of them are special education aid. And then your equalization aid is really the, that's like the big part of it all. That's the one that really is for the whole school, if you will, to really make sure that it's per pupil, and everything else are for, for, you know, different categories under that. Your special education aid is really for students going out and anything over about $45,000, they look at and they offset costs for that. Your security aid is for your at-risk students. So it's, again, you know, it's to offset the costs to make sure they get the education that they deserve, based on the formula that the state gives. Before, yeah, no, 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 we can ask questions at the end. So Esser funds, we've talked about this before, they came out in three different waves. This is Esser 2. This is set to expire at the end of this September. So as you see, it is going to be used through the summer, but then it's gone. So I can promise you it's going to get spent. That is not, that's not sticking around. So that's at the end of September, and it's not coming back. All the other grants that you saw, your Title Ones, your Title Twos, all of that money is on an annual basis. These Esser funds are kind of one and dones. So the next slide shows you our Esser 3. It's actually called ARP Esser, and this was a three-year grant, right? And as you saw, last year, the exact same slide was on there, but the numbers were higher. So this year, we spent the money. We have one more year to spend the money. As you could, like, for example, the ARPS are on the top. It started at $313,000. We're now down to $50,000 for it at the end of September of the year 2024. That's it. It's a, it's a done deal. So I can assure you, we will be spending all of that money as well. You know, enrollment changes, we really don't know. I don't have a crystal ball for that. I obviously am hoping, you know, people are always saying what an amazing district it is. People move here specifically for the district. I have heard that, which I'm very proud of. And so I'm hoping that in drips and drabs, we can get more people coming into our district for a number of different reasons. Just to repeat this, it's really important that, I say this again, those Esser grants are gone after this. They've really been fueling a lot of our budget for the past three years. You're going to hear this, there's no Board of Ed that you're not going to hear this through, and at the end of '24, they are gone. We are hoping that they get their, their S2 funding back and set to where we're all at adequacy, and we won't be needing these anymore. But I really want to make sure that everybody understands that. Our debt service, we just paid our last one on our first one, which is really pretty amazing, so I'm really happy about that. And now we're starting up again, but we have great plans. Our project is really heading in the right direction. We're off and running like I've stated before, and I'm really excited about it. And Mr. Hagman is an incredible advocate for getting those students in, and those programs, the teachers in those programs are incredible at wanting people to come here and stay here. So we're really happy about that, and we have shared server the cost with us on those things.
Currently working with three other districts to try to share services for physical therapy. Small district like us, we only need about eight hours a week to find some with them, except for the fact that it's more expensive, right? They have to pay their person and they have to make money. So the hope is, if we can band together our four districts to create a full-time position, we feel as though even with salary and benefits, we could bring in a very qualified person for less cost than paying an hourly rate, you know, through these consulting agencies. So I hope to have good news on that in the coming months. We have several applicants. I think we're up to eight or nine applicants, which a lot of people were surprised about, but those efforts are still there.
Thank you. So your 2% going up is your $4,792,380. That is going to be your new fiscal year tax levy. Your debt service going into the year is your $223,000, and that increases up to your $5 million that you see on the bottom. The. Yeah, you can go. Thank you. So because of the decrease in debt service monies that are going out, it is, last year we paid out $370,000, and because it's lower this year, you are going to, so let me be very clear. That doesn't mean that your taxes are going to go down by $340. That means your tax dollars that go to us are going to go down. I cannot speak on behalf of the municipal building. Please don't come for me when your, if your taxes go up and say you said they were going down. The portion that comes to us are going to be going down by $340,000, $340. Oh, my God, that I almost really misspoke, and that is an average monthly decrease of about $28. Please remember that these, this is an average based on your home value, but this is the average for the district. Does anybody have any questions? Oh, and there's a little note at the bottom, just to remember that fiscal year is for us are July to June, and then the town goes by a calendar year. They go January to December. Anybody have any questions?
I did. Always extraordinary aid, extraordinary. That went down by half. Yeah.
Yeah, I know, so extraordinary, that's actually like, so it's a special education adequacy budget. What they do is if they look at, the equalization aid is like the big picture, right?
Offset by going up, I noticed that, but.
Right, so, but the extraordinary aid is also a partial of the equalization aid that includes special education specifically. This is really majority geared towards, can I put this down there? Thank you, thank you. Can you hear me? Great.
One of the things that makes Debbie's job so difficult, and most school, not just business officials, school administrators, is that we try to hit moving targets. We develop budgets without actually knowing a lot of these numbers. So it's, it's common practice, it's best practice to estimate low so that you don't estimate high and then find yourself in a bit of a pickle. And extraordinary aid is one of those numbers that honestly, I don't really think anybody knows how they come up with what they give you.
It's funny, so as you see, extraordinary aid is estimated. What they're going to do, they're going to look at last year's numbers, and then they're going to pay us next year for last year.
Okay, that's kind of backwards, but I get it.
It's backwards.
Yeah.
Right.
Debbie's developed a budget, and we don't really know.
It's going to hit the mark. And then second thing I was curious about, with the Esser funds running out, we know when the deadline is, we know when that's going to happen. What type of preparations do you make? Where do you seek, we're going to have to cut somewhere, I'm assuming, right? Looked like a significant amount.
So I'm going to go, listen, for your question, we plan for the worst and then we hope for the best, right? So luckily, we've had a couple of things happen, like the sale of Linden and surpluses from the COVID years that we were able to put aside to hopefully offset. And the entire state, the BA world is calling it the fiscal cliff. So I, we've had our eye on it. We talk about it every single meeting. We do the best we can in this district by, and they were doing it even before I got here, is just with working what we have and to, you know, to, kudos to them. They've never had to really make significant changes. So I'm going to try and keep you guys on track in that direction, so.
Correction's going to happen one way or another, but thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yes.
It's good, yeah, thank you.
We're nervous.
We're nervous.
And we've been saying it now for two years. I mean, it's not like we're not being transparent about it. You know, we are, we're funding a couple salaries right now with Esser funds. What has made me a little less nervous is that we didn't get hammered with S2 aid cuts this year like we had in previous years. So that right there is more money than what we anticipated, and the hope is that that funding, funding formula is figured out and that we're not going to get hammered again next year, which, you know, we still kind of expected. That may save us little things like shared services, tuition, having that good relationship with the before and after care. I mean, it's not a tremendous amount of revenue, but it does help to offset. The one challenge with all of that is that it creates more work too on the people within the building, you know, so.
We have that wonderful partnership with the high school where they, they took on a couple of our transportation routes, and it has saved us, I mean, thousands. So we are doing the best that we can with share, because everybody is in the same boat, so everybody's grabbing onto each other, really trying to, you know, work together. As far as where the, where the hard questions come in, I hate to put it on Steve, but they go to Steve because I'm not going to tell him which way. I'll just tell him what we don't have, and then he's going to make those decisions.
Well, thank you and your committee for all your efforts.
Oh, sure.
Appreciate it.
We, we've been doing that, just what you mentioned, for at least two years, trying to plan ahead, knowing that those Esser monies are going to disappear, and where can we put some money in a capital reserve account and save money here and go with shared services there, just in preparation for what could be? You know, this year, getting the additional money instead of losing money. So you save by not losing and you gain by getting, so you won two ways. It was a bigger hit than just the increase in state aid. You didn't have to lose state aid. So that was big for us across. And the other piece you have to understand is that when we get these numbers, where did you get, five days to turn it around?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
When we get the state aid numbers, our budgets are built, then they give you a number, and then you get five days to move wherever the money you want is. So you don't have time to have board meetings and meet with towns and people or anything else. It's a very unfair practice for boards.
And next year, with the, you know, we have meetings every month, and next year they're saying the, the auditors and such, there's certain laws that, there's certain parts of the audit that can't be, do this kind of blind. And then we throw it all together at the last minute, and we're like, okay, let's, let's have a school year.
Good luck.
Yeah, they say good luck, yeah. I mean, we're working with, you know, we, we're pretty good with it.
Experience and judgment.
Yeah, we're pretty good with it, but.
One last disclaimer, because I know anybody who has any accounting sense right now is yelling at us, because we're very much aware that you should not be funding recurring costs like salaries with grant monies that are one time. But the decision that we really made administratively and obviously shared with the board in the last couple of years when we've done these is, you know, our opinion is that we want to ride out with these services and these supports as long as we possibly can, rather than taking them away from the kids now and saying, well, we can't fund them in two or three years, so let's, so let's just take them away now. And we're talking about mental health supports, and we're talking Esser funds, that that would have been what would have been cut. And those are the two areas right now that districts are in the most need of. So Debbie's doing a great job of putting, kind of putting money aside, tucking it away. It's coming. In my nine years here, we've added four and a half positions, and the only position we've cut is a two-day-a-week curriculum coordinator. So, you know, when I got here, I think we had two special ed teachers retire and they weren't replaced. You know, we cut down music to halftime. We were able to bring some of that back, and it's, it's a lot of work, but, you know, the people, everybody steps up, everybody does their part, and it's, it's, it's been good. So hopefully we can keep that going.
We didn't open any new positions through the Esser money, right? This, we just maintained what was already.
No, the Esser money did not create any new positions. Nope. No, the new positions were, were all special ed positions, some of which were created through bringing in the tuition students. That revenue allowed us to create positions and programs to bring some of our students who are out of district placements back to our school and to keep some from having to go out to, to other private schools.
Do you think that could affect the summer program in 2024?
Yes, absolutely.
So we have, there are options. So the summer programs, a lot of them, a lot of them, we've, we've been able to sustain throughout the years through Title One funds, but a lot of them are driven by Esser funds, particularly the summer camps. And we've shared with parents that this summer is the last summer that they're going to be fully funded through Esser. Several parents have reached out to me and said that they would be willing to pay out of pocket for the camps based on their experience last year. So we're going to see what we have this year. We'll obviously have to poll some of the parents to see who's interested. I don't want to build camps, promise teachers jobs, and then not have enough people enroll because that's going to be a loss to the district also. So there's definitely some moving parts, lots of variables, but yeah, we're, we're aware that a lot of the things that we're doing right now, we're not going to be able to afford to do.
We've been saying that all along, though. Anybody have any other questions?
Just curious, you mentioned a partnership with before and after care. How is that structured and what are the benefits for the district in terms of finances?
It does bring in approximately, I would say about 15 to 18 a year. It is an outsourced company. They kind of use us for our, but it's a really smooth-running, you know, program. They do an amazing job with it, and I will take any dollars. And it's very helpful to the parents, obviously, because they have to be at work and the kids are already at school. So it's nice that they're like, don't have to get transported somewhere.
This year especially has been probably our most successful partnership with them, largely because of the new management that they have here.
Other, yeah, yeah.
You know.
Is that like a rental agreement where we're receiving rent funds or?
Yes, exactly.
Understood.
I think it's per pupil, right?
It is.
That they bring in?
It is.
All right, that takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is correspondence. It was only one item, which was the Comprehensive Equity Plan. That was for another three years, correct?
Yes.
Three-year plan?
Yep.
Anybody with questions? Next is the superintendent's report. Mr. Hagman, you're up again.
So the first item is our HIV and suspension report. I did send an email about 45 minutes before the meeting apologizing. We had the wrong document in the folder. I don't know how or why it was from a year ago. It must have just been the click of the wrong file, but I did send a new one to you, and I put the correct one in the Google folder. In that report, there were three separate students that received one day of in-school suspension since last month. There were three HIV investigations with RPO, although she's not here participating on the board, she's still helping keep our building beautiful. She, again, planted the flowers out front of the main entrance, and we really do appreciate it. We get lots of comments on those throughout the week. Congratulations to our spelling bee winners. Feels like forever ago because our, our meeting is so late this month, but in the third through fifth division, congratulations to Carol I, Eli, in the fifth through sixth, Brayden Light, and the seventh and eighth, Eriko Magat. Mrs. Fair, Ms. Pfeiffer, and Ms. Mayhood put that, that together, and it's one of those, it's like one of those programs you don't typically think about, but you miss so much throughout COVID, and now that we're doing it again, it just kind of feels more normal. I had the privilege of, of. I had the privilege of being the emcee again this year. Last year, they did it on my daughter's birthday and she would not allow me to come do the spelling bee. So I was very excited to be able to come again this year and it was a lot of fun. On March 31st, Lenape Valley's band visited and played for our middle school kids. It's always fun. They're, transparently, it is a recruitment option, opportunity for them, which is great. The kids enjoy it and we really do, for, as small as we are, right? I'd say we're probably a third of the size of Byram. They played at our roundtable luncheon the other day where we recognized the student award winners. And at least, I think a third of the band was from Stanhope, you know, which is pretty significant since our kids make up one-fifth of the population up there. And they were wonderful. They were awesome. They blew our socks off. So Mr. DeGrasse, I appreciate him bringing his people down. It was great. The next item was our Treps Marketplace for any of you who have seventh graders who walked away with a few extra bucks in your pocket. Such a wonderful event. The kids K through eight look forward to it. They come in with their bags and their money and there were really a lot of creative products this year, a lot of very talented kids. Thank you to Mrs. Ettinger, Ms. Coppola, and Mrs. DiCataldo for putting that together and organizing that, especially Ms. Ettinger and Ms. Coppola, because there's more to it than just creating a product and putting it on a table and selling it. There's a whole eight-week program that goes into how, what's involved in entrepreneurship, what's involved in starting a business. The amount of money that you make isn't your net profit, right? What money did you spend to create your product? And I think the kids really get a lot out of that program and we're excited to keep it coming year in and year out. Congratulations to Mrs. Harold for satisfying all of the requirements to become a certified board member through NJ School Boards Association.
Congratulations. Nice.
You didn't, it's no prize money involved. There's no medals or trophies, but.
They recognize the May 25th dinner.
But we appreciate the time that you put in to support this district and really help make some of the difficult decisions. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Couple eighth grade events that are coming up that I just wanted to make everybody aware of. Our dinner dance is on June 13th at 6 o'clock. I've been working with Mrs. Harold. I apologize for ghosting you. Email's been a challenge the last few days. We're trying to get our end-of-the-year celebration for our marking, honor roll people that same day. I'm sorry, the day after for our board member, before our board meeting. We have a shadow date, May 30th, which is up at the high school. The kids will go, they'll walk around, a group of kids with a student to check out the classes, the cafeteria, everything that's involved up there. And pending your approval on the revised district calendar today, we anticipate graduation being on June 16th at 6:00, which is a Friday, which I think would make everybody very, very happy.
It's text graduation date and time also. I don't know if anybody has a conflict other than me, but it is text graduation. Yes. Just so you know.
Not on the list. I just wanted to mention that Debbie and I took a ride over to the, I guess, the old Linden Avenue School today. They had an open house for people within the community from 5 to 6. They really did a wonderful job with that school, you know, and the inside looks really beautiful. All their teachers were there, excited about bringing kids in. I was most impressed with what they did with the property behind the school because it was really a mess. They're still waiting on the playground. I think you said it was 12 to 16 weeks out. But I'm excited that they were able to bring new life to that school. I know that that school holds a very special place in the hearts of a lot of people who are here and have been through this town and district. And although it's not a school within our district anymore, it's nice to know that we'll have some young kids in minds being molded and it'll be bringing some tax revenue into the town as well. Jay, who, I guess owns the company, right? He runs it. He's the individual that purchased the property from us, is very interested, as we are, in investigating a partnership through the preschool expansion program through the New Jersey Department of Education. It's a very challenging program and it's challenging to work with the DOE because, A, they're short-staffed like everybody else and this just kind of seems to take a backseat to everything else that they're doing. But to briefly summarize, it's an opportunity to provide free, full-day preschool to anybody in Stanhope without costing the district anything. And they've partnered with HAPACOM in the past successfully and we're hopeful that maybe we can partner with them in the coming years. That's all I got, unless anybody has questions.
Pretty good. It just feels like a big digable. We talked about the property for so long and now to hear you say that is well an accomplishment.
I was bragging on Debbie's behalf to Jay earlier when he was walking that she's the fourth business administrator that attempted to sell that building.
You got the best part of it.
Yeah. And it was finally a success.
Yes.
I'm excited for them. They seem very excited about it. And I'm sure the neighbors are excited too, to not have a rundown, broken-down-looking building in front of their property.
It makes a difference when you drive down the street, especially for the people that live there.
And the incredible part was the last-minute move, because when we had, when we were planning that, everybody said the building is not worth anything. So we were pricing it out just for the land and we were gonna put it up just for the land. And in the last minute, right, we said, this might, look, we can always go back. So we included the value of the land and that brought in significant dollars, extra dollars than was, than what was anticipated. So that was a good move on the BA and administrative point to take the time to do it, you know? I mean, you just simply could have said, nah, let's not do it, but.
And a perk of building a relationship with them as well to help out the community is certainly.
And the town, the town, I mean, you saw up there that the taxes are going down. What is it? The school, the school tax is going down roughly $28 a month. But just adding Linden Avenue back to the tax wall is close to a full tax point. It's about 20 grand, I think, the taxes on that property. So that's almost a full tax point that the community gets back from an ongoing gift. Let's just put it that way, from the school board. So that was, that was nice, nice. Anybody else with questions on that?
We've got a ton of people at the next council meeting looking for their tax money.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll say, go to the tape. You'll hear me say.
Yes, yes.
Keep it in a storage facility next to the pool on the roof.
Yeah, exactly. Take the elevator.
Yes.
Yes. I'm gonna talk about the facilities hire first. Deshaun Sears, you'll see in personnel, has resigned, but we found somebody. Her name is Veronica Tejeda and she is ready to go pending all criminal history background and everything. She should be starting on, I wanna say, May 1st. She was, already got a tour of the building. Again, with the help of Valeska, who is incredible always, she seems very eager. She has been doing this for a very long time and we're really looking forward to her being part of the team. As far as the construction, Steve and I met with the architect and engineers today just to kind of get back on the, you know, on the same page, make sure where we were heading. And we are setting up, right now, we have tentative meetings set up for next Thursday to meet with the contractors for all projects involved, to see their summer timelines, what they need from us moving forward. We certainly, we're trying to really make sure it's a project that, thank you so much for winning the bid. There's more to it. We're still running a school. Please don't forget about us. Get back in here, tell us where we are and how we're going. And please know that we are going to be doing this all the time and checking in. So we're just trying to get them to understand, this is how we work. We wanna know what's going on. Come on in, tell us your timeline. Let's make sure everything runs smoothly and safely for the kids in the school.
I mentioned to you just before the meeting, I have, within the quote for the furniture and the STEM lab, there's some nice renderings of the space. I had been hesitant to send it out to all of you just because I needed to meet with the architect to make sure everything fit within the budget landscape that we're looking at. We were able to do that today, so I anticipate getting that on the board agenda for next week. So that's a document that I anticipate sharing with all of you before the next committee so that you can take a look at that, see what it looks like. And with the job meetings for the upcoming jobs, we're hoping to give you somewhat of a comprehensive update on everything that's happening. I don't wanna say it's been a lull, but it's been kind of like the calm before the storm. Right now, we're just trying to get our numbers all lined up and I feel like we're gonna blink and stuff's gonna be going on, so.
And I think even before the numbers, since we already have an idea, I think with the summer, it being summer projects and us having summer programs, making sure it falls in line without any detriment to the students, they have to know that we're, you know, you have to be on our page. You have to understand what's going on here because the safety of the students is what matters most.
Just advice, I recently done a bunch of remodeling, a couple of the offices. Furniture lead times are like three, four months. It's in some cases. Are you guys making contingency plans in case they're not here on time?
So we've been told we were using school specialty, which specializes in working with schools for not just resources but furniture. Understanding from the rep is that as long as we order early May, we should be good to go to get everything here in the summertime.
That's what they all say until it comes, but as long as you're aware.
Thank you.
We knew.
They can't control it either.
So when we initially, so December 14th, the day after the referendum vote, you know, we spoke with everybody, the Architect Bond Council, we knew that getting the STEM lab done this summer is going to be a challenge because of that reason. We talked about whether or not we wanted to do it this summer or put it off to the following summer where we can just kind of breathe a little bit and get our feet under us. We felt significantly that it would be such a disservice to our current seventh graders to not have that opportunity, even if we're lacking some furniture. The construction should be done and it'll still, it'll still provide more than what our current space is providing. And with all of that excitement, you know, we use the kids to hand out flyers and stuff. A lot of the current seventh graders, we, I didn't wanna have to do that to them, right? We put all this work in and now we're not seeing anything. So at the very least, worst-case scenario, the room is ready to go and we don't have furniture. We'll bring in current furniture and we'll kind of use it as is from there.
Anybody with questions? Lot of moving parts, lot of moving parts. Next is curriculum update. Just real quickly, you know, along with the STEM lab, I've mentioned several times that we're looking to bring in a consultant to help us with the redesign of our STEM curriculum. Not that I don't think that we have fully capable people here, but we don't have anybody whose sole purpose here is curriculum. So bringing somebody in to kind of help us guide through that, navigate through that, identify the appropriate technology for our students to interface with the other technology that we already have. My cautiously optimistic hope is that I'll have a contract for you to review before the May meeting. Understand that's in two weeks, so we're pushing. We do have one, we have two pending. One individual who came highly, highly recommended from a former state superintendent of the year, currently working in the Moorestown School District. So we're trying to push it along. It's slower than we had anticipated right now, but I hope to have some updates for you in a couple of weeks. Anybody with questions? Okay, next add committee reports. We start with Personnel, Curriculum, School Climate, and Culture Committee. Jen?
It is a busy time of year for Steve, not for me, with having to, with deadlines on having to tell teachers if they're coming back next year or moving things around. So he's been very busy doing that. And Debbie already spoke about that we had a resignation of full-time custodian, but you'll see on the agenda number 27 is the part to approve the full-time new hires, so that's there. There's been a little bit of change in substitutes, so, you know, I keep talking about the revolving door. Some go, some come. The names change. We seem to be kind of flat. I guess that's good.
We're in a good place right now.
Good, thank you.
Do you mind if I just real quick recognize Dolores Bollinger? I know we've gone through some substitute teachers who have resigned before they've even worked here. Mrs. Bollinger has worked here, I believe, since I started here. She's a retired teacher. She's probably put eight to 10 years of service time in here. I'm not 100% sure why she's resigning, but I'm hoping it's to spend some more time with friends and family and less time here in this Petri dish of a school in the middle of the winter. But she's been wonderful and I just wanted to thank her for her service here.
Miss DiCataldo's job as principal, the job description has now also been changed to include her curriculum responsibilities. So that's nothing new. She's been doing it. It's just now official in her, yes.
It will be.
Okay.
When I presented to you for approval.
I apologize.
In May.
It will.
It's all good.
Okay. Can't keep up.
Well, that's the problem, I can't keep up. I had hoped to give it to you for today, but it wasn't ready.
So that's coming, so say yes. Along those lines, Mr. Hagman already said the last day of school, if we vote upon it, will be Friday, June 16th, because we're giving back snow days because we had a mild winter. I personally like that, especially ending on a Friday. It's a beautiful thing. So hopefully, everybody feels that way. School performance report, we've already gone over. There is a proposal for a new bell schedule. Yes, that's still, yeah, okay. That is to accommodate the eighth graders for next year that have the opportunity to go up to the high school for the high school's first period. I know we talked a little bit about that at the last board meeting. So by moving around a couple of minutes here and there, it's a total of 15 minutes to the change of the current bell schedule. It really makes a difference on the kids when they come back here to start their day. They're not coming back in the middle of first period. It doesn't disrupt anybody's learning. So it's a positive. I know there's probably going to be some people that it could create some challenges for because the school day would start 15 minutes later for everybody. But sometimes change is good and the longevity of while we're putting up what is significant for the seventh grade because they're a tiny class. There's eight kids, six kids?
I had another one reach out to me that I forwarded to Lenape that's interested now in joining the German class. So I think it's anywhere between eight and 11 kids, all that were less than 30 in eighth grade.
There's 20, there's 26 going into eighth grade next year. So it's a significant amount of kids taking the opportunity. The more we work with the high school to grow that opportunity, the better it is going forward for all of our kids. Though maybe they'll be able to open it up for even more offerings for classwork. So changing the bell schedule by 15 minutes to shift it really ultimately is a benefit, in my opinion, to all the grades going forward. So initially, might be a little challenging, but.
I presented this schedule for feedback to my calendar committee, which consisted of, Mrs. Harold was on that, some teachers and some parents. And, you know, I did get some questions and I got some feedback that I was actually able to make some adjustments for, to accommodate. And one of the questions I got is, why are we changing the schedule for the whole school for just a handful of kids? Although next year will really be year one of this initiative, the hope is that we expand it. The hope is that we provide additional programs. We've already talked about STEM program, STEM programming and art programming and offering that maybe just for our eighth graders, but maybe for our seventh as well. We don't know. The other piece to this is that this is a zero-cost hour district. The Lenape is not charging our students for attending. They're also not charging us for transporting the kids. It's easy enough for them to get on their regular routes to school, but they're providing courtesy busing after their first period to bring the kids back to Stanhope, Byram, and Netcon. So Netcon is participating, Byram is participating. I see it as a win-win. Obviously, the high school, you know, gets kids who are more prepared to take more advanced classes as they, you know, continue through their high school years. And we've even talked about offering high school-level classes in our new STEM lab for our eighth graders without possibly having to send them up. Not everybody can do a 7 o'clock class, you know? So down the road, it would be nice maybe to either have one of their high school teachers or a qualified teacher here teach a high school course in our lab after school. So there's lots of, lots of things that are moving with this. In addition to moving everything back 15 minutes, I am proposing and recommending that we provide lunch for our, during our early dismissal days, which is not something that we currently do. I calculated, I think, 16 or 17 early dismissal days that we have throughout the year. There are several reasons for that. The three that I like to point at most significantly, number one, we have some kids here who are food deprived. They're academically, I'm sorry, they're economically disadvantaged and in some cases, it's the only meal that they get here. Yes, we can send them home with a bag lunch, but at the same time, there's something special about getting that hot meal that maybe they wouldn't get otherwise. Coming off of the pandemic, right, social, emotional opportunities for kids to socialize with one another, that's 27 minutes built into 16 different days for the kids to have an opportunity to sit with their friends, you know, unstructured, chat about their day, make their plans. And it's also helpful, my third reason to, to machios who, you know, were a small fish, you know, in a, in a big pond and they don't have to take on our contract and they do. It's a, it's a revenue producing opportunity for them. It allows us to bring our cafeteria playground aids for additional days. It gives them more work. I just think it, it was a great opportunity. So for a 27 minute lunch, initially we moved the, the time 25 minutes beyond our regular early dismissal day. Through working with the committee, I got some feedback. I was able to manipulate the schedule to where we're only adding 15 minutes to that day with a 27 minute lunch and we're still fulfilling the required four hours of instructional time. So I, I think it's a positive. All of the other changes are, are just kind of minor. You know, I got some feedback to shorten the PM homeroom for our, our middle school kids so that they don't have as much time lingering at their lockers. But overall, I, I recommending the change because I think it'll be real positive and zero cost.
Just, so the period there at Lenape is a zero period.
I'm, I have been referring to it as a zero period.
So when they come to the.
It is their first.
It's Lenape's first.
No, no, I understand. It's Lenape. So when they come to, to Valley Road School, they have a full day of school.
Yes. And it doesn't, so like right now, anybody who goes up to Lenape this year, and there's just one student, right?
There's just the one.
Okay. When he comes back in, he's coming in, school's already started.
Yes.
And that makes it harder for him, harder for the teacher.
Understood.
So with the shifting of just a little bit, it's a smooth transition in the hopes that as we go forward, more kids will be like, hey, wait, those other kids did it. It was great. Let me do it.
It's a great idea in the 15 minutes. We don't know if it helps or hurts. It'll help some parents. It may hurt other parents. You know, that's going to fall out as the year goes on, but I just think to avail ourselves of the opportunity. I just wanted to make sure that I understood it correctly, that it's, it's a zero period and a kid comes here and has a full school day here.
And the good thing is that the school doors are going to open right at eight. Even though it's actually eight fifteen, but the doors are going to be open at eight. So overall, I think if people can make it here right at eight, then they're still within somewhere within the original window.
And if you have, and parents that have older kids and responsible kids do drop them off before the doors open. And, you know, we haven't had incidents, you know, the kids have been very well behaved. There's teachers walking in at that time. It's not like there's zero supervision. I've been asked the question, why can't we open the doors earlier? It's just a matter, it's a matter of supervision. I don't have personnel, you know, available to watch the kids if we let them in early before the school day starts. But we really haven't had any issues other than, you know, a minor, a minor little scuffle here and there, but that happened, can happen anywhere.
Last but not least, everybody in Gil can see it. I can't see it. I'm going to say we're past the deadline now. So everybody did their superintendent evaluation?
Almost.
Okay, almost. If you haven't, please do it because it needs to be done.
We'll talk about that in old business.
Okay, perfect.
Talk about that in old business.
And that's all I have.
Anyone with questions?
Yeah, I think it's great for the students and the program. Did Byram and Netcon change bell, bell schedules as well?
Byram starts much later than us.
Okay.
So they have a different predicament where I think their kids are going to be coming to school earlier than their school day starts. I don't think that they, so we're very fortunate where we have the flexibility because we don't have transportation. We don't have a, a fleet of buses bringing our kids to school. Byram's start time is dependent on Lenape's start time because they share buses through Byram Bus. They transport the Lenape kids and then they transport the Byram kids. So it's not like they can move theirselves, themselves up or back because there's a third route. Then after that, I believe they're taking another school. And Netcon, I'm not sure if they're changing. I think they already have a later start time than us and a slightly later end time. So we might actually just be more on par with them.
With earliest district.
And Byram's going to have a fairly significant gap from what the high school starts.
So this was a smoother transition for us than, than for them.
Anyone else? All right. Next we have Business Services Facilities Technology Committee. Kenya?
Okay, so Debbie, you covered, you covered most of my items, but definitely the custodian situation, we discussed that and gladly we have now a new full-time custodian. And apparently putting ads on the papers, it seems to be working, which is a good thing. The budget, we discussed the budget during the meeting. One good thing is that the dental plan, like you mentioned, we originally budgeted for 4% and it is now at 3%, which is not much, but it is, every penny counts, right? We went over the projects. You covered some of the updates for the ones that have been completed, which you're now picking the final details, like the furniture, tiles, whatever that is. And then the blacktop, we mentioned the last committee meeting and last board meeting too, that we have that on hold because the pricing that we got during bidding was over double what we had estimated already. So we, that is currently on hold until we find, reopen the bid and hopefully find a better price somewhere else. And then the age back, you're gonna, we're gonna go out for bidding in the summer, hopefully, with a tentative 2024 installation date. Then this, oh. I need to finish the Board of Education. I need to finish the superintendent report, but the school ethic form is also due for some of us. Did everybody complete it already or do we still need some people?
No, we're good. We're good.
Okay, so good. So that has been completed already. So thank you everybody that did that. The dates for the NJ SBA workshop is not available for Monday, October 23rd through Thursday, October 26th. And Debbie's already working on accommodations to make sure that we get the best price possible. So if anybody here is going, please let Debbie know.
Yeah, just to touch on that a little bit, I put in for everybody to go. And the reason why I did that is because it's a lot harder to get you into, I booked the ocean and it's a lot more difficult to get that later, but way easy to say you're not going because the deadline to remove you is like the end of September, but ocean falls up the fastest. So I figure let's reserve it, get it. It's no harm, no foul. And, and it's actually less expensive as far as registration goes if we do it as a group. And I know for a fact that we have the numbers to support the group rate and, and it's a flat rate. So we're certainly going to hit that number regardless of who does go. So it was just like a safety net to put everybody in, make sure everybody's covered and just pull people out as, as it goes.
Yep, good planning. And then last but not least, congratulations to Debbie on obtaining her qualifying purchasing agent certificate.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, which is a great thing for us, I'm assuming, because
It is.
it allows us to go out for bid for, you know, bigger projects. So that was it for me.
Anyone with questions? Next is Policy Communications Committee. Tom?
Sure. So at our recent meeting, we looked at a significant number of, of policies and regulations that are either being updated or adopted. But in terms of the impact upon operations within the school, I don't think any of them have a significant effect upon like the daily operations. But I'll quickly go through. First was with respect to board member orientation and training. That designates specific timing required of us to complete our training. Instructional supplies, the policy designates processes and parameters for attaining instructional supplies, inclusive of how instructional supplies may be requested of, of families and when that may be appropriate. The use of corporal punishment policies just clearly defines in, in, in obvious terms when, when physical contact is absolutely inappropriate and when it may be appropriate in the context of a school day or a staff member's work with students. And there was a policy specifically for teaching staff and support staff. Health services personnel outlines requirements of the school physician, student health records. That policy includes an update for requirements and, and opportunities for students, for schools to store student records. Health services, nothing, nothing major with respect to that. Then there were a few policies pertaining to how, how we may accept and, and use funds that are received through grants. Again, nothing that, that would significantly impact the life within the school day, but may impact, you know, Debbie's work. And I think a lot of this comes from things like ESSR funds where we saw a lot of increases in, in grant funding for schools. And as a result of, of that process, the past few years, some additional guidelines have been provided for schools.
And reminders. A lot of them are, don't forget people, you're not doing this. So it was a lot of, make sure you're getting it done on time.
School district security includes a new requirement for digital blueprints of the buildings, which Stanhope has been ahead of the game on for a number of years now. And a citizens advisory committee policy, should we incorporate a citizens advisory committee? It provides some, some guidelines for how we may accomplish that. In terms of the policies being abolished, those are being abolished simply due to duplication of parameters and stipulations that are found in other policies. So it was recommended that those policies be abolished. Any questions?
Thank you. Next is Sussex Ed Services. Our, my reports kind of mimics almost the same as the board report for here. We're, we're working on budget. It's finalized. The difference is, is that we have no, we do not get any tax money. We are simply fee for service. So we can't go back and say we're raising this 2% or whatever. We fee for service and all of our fees have to be announced in January. So when districts build their budgets, they know what our fees are. So our budget is, is complete. We are doing personnel this month in May. Hiring of all the staff and letting people know who are not going to be retained or rift, et cetera. Also, at this point in time, we are also working on the superintendent's evaluation. So we're kind of mimicking the same things happening here. At Stanhope, attended the committee meetings. I don't know, we got the first run of our new webpage. We got to take a look at that. It's not up and running yet.
Yeah, it's a, it's a PDF.
It's a PDF and it's just pictures, but it's, it's an idea of what the graphics look like, the colors, how it's formatted, not how it's formed, how it looks, where the buttons are, quick access. So we are working on that and hopefully in our next meeting, we'll be able to make some decisions and take the next step to get it so where we can have a, not live yet, but a functional webpage so we can start tweaking and adding and making Nick's life miserable. So that will, we'll be working on that.
And that's, and that's part of a committee that's made up of a couple of board members, teachers, and I believe we have a parent or two.
Yes.
We have people serving dual roles, parent, board member, teacher, parent. It works.
And last but not least, we're also, like we're doing here, we're working on the superintendent's evaluation. And I, I guess I might, instead of new business, we ran into that issue where the servant went down for school boards, right? Somebody saw my note on that and that came back. So what I'd like to do is make, move the deadline to this Monday, okay, which would be May 1st. Okay, noon, May 1st. Okay, at noon, what I would do is contact school boards and tell them to do compile it. I just had it done for Sussex. Once they, we got through a minor technicality, it only takes about a day to do. So if we do it on Monday, I should be able to email you the compiled report on Wednesday or Thursday. And our board meeting is on the
10th.
10th. So we have time to, for you, my, my goal was to give you time to review it before that board meeting. So when we sit down at that executive to discuss it and come up with the framework of the evaluation, we're prepared to talk about it and it just makes that meeting move just a lot smoother if we're all prepared. Okay? So I, I, there is nobody conflicted. So everybody here will get a copy of the compiled report. Okay? So there's nobody conflicted. So everybody will get a chance to, to participate in that. That's it for Sussex and Stanhope's Board President's Report. Anybody with questions on either school? All right. Moving forward, that takes us to public session number one. Seeing no one in the audience for a public session, that now moves us down on the agenda. For the next item would be minutes for approval. Items one and two, that is the regular board minutes. And the second one is the executive session meeting minutes. This is a voice vote. So all those in favor of approving.
Motion first.
I'm sorry, motion.
Motion. Second.
Okay. This is a voice vote. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Next is the budget adoption. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay, that's items one and two. The actual budget adoption is item one. Item two is the travel and related expense reimbursement, 23, 24. That's a mandated policy. Am I correct?
Yes, annually, yep.
Annually. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Chocat?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharfstein?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. We have a budget.
We have a budget.
We have a budget. Okay, next is administrative action items. There's one item. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Steve had relayed that the report was the wrong one, but the new correct one is in the folder now. Okay. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Chocat?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharfstein?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Next is policy items one through four. So we have first reading bylaws, approval first reading of certain policies. Then we have approved first reading of regulation and the abolish of policies and regulations. That's one through four. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Just one question because I couldn't, didn't read what the old one was and I don't remember. What's the difference between the new citizens advisory committee policy and the old one that's being abolished?
So the, the new one, if I remember correctly, includes required language, whereas the one that's being abolished was repetitive and a lot of what was in it was already included in other policy.
One's also policy, one's regulation. Thank you.
Any other questions? Vote, please.
Mrs. Chocat?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharfstein?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Next is education action items one and two. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, one is the calendar, revised calendar, and two is the approval of the new proposed bell schedule. Any discussion on those, the calendar or the bell schedule?
I just don't know if you want to take back that graduation date and ask anybody else before we approve it.
We'll change the time for you.
Well, luckily Aaron's not here. Otherwise it would have been a huge problem, but
I don't know if anybody else has a senior at Tech who's got a kid here. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I know I've had the conversation with Tech about having a Saturday graduation so that every other district in the county doesn't have to try to revolve around that. So I would say as of right now, I can't think of anybody that has a conflict. And I don't know if we would make the change otherwise just because of where it sits, but it's definitely something, if I come with my tail between my legs at our next meeting looking to, to change it, I apologize. But I think I'd, I'd rather approve it now and figure out from there.
I think Gary may show up here instead of at his brother's.
Anyone else with questions? Vote, please.
Excuse me, Mrs. Chocat?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharfstein?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Next is personnel action items one through 28. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Majorities are ESY or Extended School Year. The majorities are ESY, or Extended School Year. The appointments, are these all of the appointments, or there's more?
It's not all. There are two teaching positions that I still need to fill. Unfortunately, Ms. Pfeiffer, who initially anticipated doing the STEM, isn't available during the dates. And one of our ASD teachers is not sure if she is able to, due to a family situation she's currently going through. So I'm hoping to have them filled in two weeks for our May meeting. But obviously, filling the summertime positions is not always the easiest. I expect also a slew of paraprofessional recommendations for these as well, as we initially put it out to our current paraprofessionals. We will need more. We'll put it out to our substitute teachers, substitute paraprofessionals, and then, if necessary, we'll put it out in a regular listing.
Okay.
Can you just remind us of the dates of the two programs?
Um, I can't. It's going to take me a minute, though. I'm sorry. Let me just go to my calendar. So the ESY programs and the learning acceleration programs are starting on June 26th. They're Monday through, Monday through Thursday programs. The learning acceleration programs are four weeks, which brings you through June, July 20th. The ASD, ESY programs are five weeks, bringing you through the 27th. Our ERI program is four weeks, bringing you through the 20th. The camps will start immediately after the learning acceleration programs, so that the kids didn't have to choose between one or the other. Those will start on July 24th. They'll be three weeks, Monday through Thursday, bringing us through August 10th.
That's the one where the STEM would be, is that camp?
Yeah.
And what would be the timeframe of that?
The STEM, I'm sorry, the camps are full day. They start, I believe, at 8:30, and they go till 2:30, I believe. The other programs are not full-day programs. For the camps, we're anticipating this year, the kids come for the full day. We had some kids coming in and out last year, one, someone to go to music, someone to go to art. It kind of became hectic. I also didn't feel super comfortable about kids being in and out throughout the day. So we're going to recommend that the kids come for the whole day, even if, you know, music's not their thing, you know, to kind of, to go for that. But the other ones could be an hour and a half at a time. You know, if you're just going for reading and you're not going for math, it could be 8:30 to 10 o'clock, and then you could be finished.
Anyone else with questions?
For number 10, for Mrs. Connolly, is that for the school year or for the summertime?
That's for the ESY program.
Summertime, right?
Yep, summertime, yeah.
For items 14 and 16, I see that there's been an appointment for the, just two speech therapist evaluations, to conduct the evaluations? Just out of curiosity, why there's two?
For ESY through the school year.
Okay.
We have one full-time speech pathologist who's full-time with us here. The other person, we share services with Lenape. They're half here and half there. One person couldn't fulfill our needs, and that is the case for most K-8 schools because of the large number of PSD, preschool students that have speech needs. And the younger kids traditionally have a lot of needs, and as they get older, you know, that obviously becomes less and less. So Lenape had a need for a halftime person, we had a need for an additional halftime person. Depending on their availability and which students they see, some, they'll both do evaluations throughout the course of the year.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions? Vote, please.
Mrs. Choket?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam?
Yes.
Mrs. Scharfstein?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Next is business service action items one through 31. I had to beat out the personnel, right? I had to have the most.
Can I point out that there is actually a typo? It's 30 items. If you look at number 14, that sentence somehow worked its way to separate that table. That shouldn't be there. That's the sentence from the previous year. So we just want to remove 14.
14, so that whole thing is out.
Yeah, apologize for that. So that third row of the table should be connected with the row above it.
Okay? So it's one through 30.
Still got it, though. Still two more.
I knew you'd edge it out. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
On item number 13 for the preschool, if something comes to fruition with the preschool on Linden Avenue, how does that impact us?
So that won't happen for next year. It's quite a process, it's quite a lengthy process to apply and to be approved. It will take away opportunities for revenue in the preschool program. We don't make a lot of money for preschool. The board has made a decision several years ago, and my recommendation has continued, that we want to offer a low-cost option for our preschool students. So that revenue will go away, because ultimately, what will happen is, if we receive the grant, we'll have a certain number of spots, several spots, to provide free preschool. And we'll, if we partner with, what's the name of the company, First Impressions? A similar partnership that they have with the PACON is, they take those students, we pay them with the grant money that we receive. So really, it's no cost to us. Again, we only have a handful of tuition-based kids. The majority of our kids in our preschool have special needs, and they attend for free. So you're talking about a small rate. The impact that it would have on providing free preschool for anybody in the town that's interested would, in my opinion, far outweigh the few thousand dollars that we get through
Anyone else with questions? Not hearing any. Roll call vote, please.
I did want to say one thing. I'm trying to find it. And it's only because I'm losing my mind. The, I did have them put in, just like I did earlier in the year, that almost the situation where we approved Steve to hire...
It's number nine.
Number, thank you so much.
If you want to refer to it.
Thank you. Because our board meetings are back-to-back between this one and the next one in May, there would be too much time to pay certain bills overlapping, and I am very serious about getting the bill money out. So there are certain, you know, bills that I will be paying at your approval to get them out, you know, after the meeting and you seeing it after the fact. I just wanted that to be very obvious and aware. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Choket?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam?
Yes.
Mrs. Scharfstein?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Next is new business. I already covered the date for the CSA evaluation, which will be this coming Monday, May 1st. It has to be submitted by noon time, because afternoon time, I'll call school boards and have them start the compiling process. Anyone else with new business for the board?
I'll just say, May 25th is the awards and recognition and last meeting of the year for Sussex County School Boards Association. It's at Newton Country Club in person, if anybody is interested.
It's May 25th?
May 25th.
Is that, is that out already?
Yeah.
All right. So it's on, it's on there, right?
It's on there, yep.
And is May 13th the delegate assembly?
I'll have to check. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I think, yeah.
I've got it on the calendar.
But you have to attend delegate assemblies if you want to earn certifications, so keep that in mind.
You can attend virtually, though, at least right now.
Yes, I recommend it, because it's a drive.
Yes. May 13th, May 13th, yeah, I think May 13th is the delegate assembly. But you can't vote if you attend virtually. So if you are the voting person, you have to go in person.
What is happening on the 25th again? The 25th is the school boards county meeting. So we have several a year, but this last one is the recognition, and we have a couple other, you know, people come in and talk. Teacher of the year, I think, will be there from Sussex County, so it's a nice meeting to come to, especially if you've never been to one before. It's not super-heavy topics.
Kathy Heller will be there? Will they be?
I don't think so, no. We gave her a send-off last time I saw her.
Last time.
When was that? At our state, our regular state board meeting in Trenton, so.
And I did send her something from the board, like I said I would, so.
Anybody else have new business? Anyone bringing up old business?
Yes, just to keep it on the radar, and I know that we said that we'll probably look into it more for next year, but can we not forget about possible student delegate?
We started that conversation at the board level and didn't continue it.
Well, we've been busy, but just to keep it on everybody's radar that maybe we can...
I personally am happy to entertain, you know, any decision that the board makes. So I just understand, that's one of those that I kind of want to put in your hands to discuss. I don't think that that should be a decision made by me.
Agreed.
But again, I'm happy to facilitate any conversation and, you know, take action on the recommendation of the board.
I have a general statement and topic. I believe it's old business. I want to first commend Mr. Hugman on the way he handled the most recent scare situation that involved another school district. I believe the way it was handled as a parent was excellent, and as a board member, I was proud of it. With that in mind, I think it was within this calendar year, you guys discussed lockdown rules, and I think it's within, you know, with the guidance of the state. Can you, somebody explain to me a little bit more how and what the regulations are? Are they available? How often do you guys discuss these type of topics? Every time I see it on the news, I automatically think about our district and what are we, what are we doing?
So, you know, that's one topic where there is definite hesitation in speaking publicly on, because you don't want to air your procedures in a public setting.
That makes sense.
Especially with us live streaming and recording.
Yeah.
What I can tell you and any board member, I'd be happy to sit and review our emergency crisis binder, you know, at any time. And we can go through the procedures. If anybody is interested, let me know, and I can try to make you aware. So we do our, every month, you have to do one fire drill and one emergency drill.
Okay.
Those emergency drills can be a lockdown, active shooter drill, they can be a shelter-in-place, which is typically, you know, we use that most often if there's something in the hall and we don't want the kids coming out. If somebody's injured, somebody's sick, close your door, close the blind, continue doing your business, right? Continue teaching unless you hear otherwise. And our evacuation drills. So if anybody is interested, you know, I'd be happy to have you come.
Yeah, and I'll reach out to you, yeah.
And walk through. Whenever we do a lockdown, we typically invite the Stanhope Police Department, where they walk through with us, just to give us some feedback. We've had the prosecutor's office here, not in a couple of years now, and they've given us some feedback as well. We test during those our panic alarm system to make sure that it's functional. So I believe last month was the last one that we did. But as far as the details, I'd prefer not to, in public, go through them.
That makes sense.
I'd share the, one of the winter meetings for Sussex County, we did have a specialist come in and talk to all of, everybody in attendance at the county meeting about some best practices, procedures, and what's on the horizon for these types of drills and lockdowns.
Are you guys comfortable with what's currently in place? Yeah.
And I jokingly, but not...
The guy from the state there, right?
Yeah, we had a guy from the state, and we also had a gentleman, I think he was originally from Colorado and involved in some of the incidents out there, who now goes around and talks to all different schools and states about what to do and how to do it and best practices. Yeah.
I will jokingly, but not jokingly, say volunteer on the HSA, because I feel like every time I'm here, running a fundraiser.
We do that on purpose. Mrs. Harold's here, let's do a lockdown.
It's that firsthand knowledge.
I mean, I wouldn't say it's every day, obviously, but you can see how often, you know, when she's not here every day, but there's been at least a handful of times when you've been here for drills.
And I can see having kids in three different schools right now. I can see how they all handle them, and we do a very good job with our communication.
That's wonderful, yeah. We're very pleased.
Excellent job with the communication. My experience, I got a text from Lenape about 30 minutes prior to me hearing anything from here. So as soon as I heard a text saying nearby district, my thoughts, obviously, as a parent here, immediately went to here, and we got on the phone, you know, ASAP to ensure that I wasn't here. So my heart dropped, obviously. Again, crazy situation, it's tough to handle. I think you guys did a wonderful job. Is there any way that, you know, communication between, or, and I don't know all the intricacies, and I know it's very complicated, but is there a way that Lenape and however the messages go out are semi, at the same time, so that we don't have that delay or lull or worry or, and again, it's not on you, I understand, it's very difficult to go through that.
What I can say is that we can make that attempt.
Right.
I have no control over what happens there and when they put these things out. What I can tell you is that the delay was caused, well, again, very different situations. We have recess and outside gym and stuff like that. We found out at approximately the same time through text from a colleague, and then soon after, from the Stanhope Police Department, where I believe Debbie and I were the only two administrators at the time. And in the time that we identified the urgency in getting the kids in the building, rather than getting everything out to the community first, so that was the time that it took to then get back in the office and send the alert out, because that's a matter of sitting in front of the computer, logging in, typing something out, making sure you're not putting something in there that's wrong, and then getting it out. So that was the delay behind Lenape.
Totally understand. Again, I think you guys did a great job. I just didn't know the process and if there was a way to further better communicate with them. That's all.
So, I mean, we're, we communicate via text. You know, their stance in that moment was, let's get it out as soon as we can. And ours was, let's make sure the kids are safe before we worry about going anything else to the parents.
Any, anyone else comments? Or anything on old business? Again, we're going to skip the public session number two, because of the lack of public. And there is no, we have no reason for the executive, am I correct?
No. Initially, I was concerned that there may be a personnel topic that we need to discuss, so I asked that it go on the agenda, asked to not have to put it on an executive, I'm sorry, on an addendum. But fortunately, there's no need.
So we do not have an executive? That takes us to our next item, which is adjournment. Just, before we go to adjournment, just remember, at the next meeting, though, the 10th, we do have that executive at the end to do the CSA evaluation, and that does take some time. So just letting you know ahead of time that we're going to be here for a little while doing that. You know, the better prepared we are, the quicker it goes.